To the May 4th, 2021, meeting of the Salem Planning Commission. Shelby, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Augustine.
Here.
Commissioner Griggs.
Here.
Commissioner Heller.
Here.
Commissioner Kopcho.
I'm here.
Commissioner Levin, I don't see him arrived yet. Commissioner McKinley.
Here.
Commissioner Pollak.
Here.
Commissioner Schweikart.
Here.
And Commissioner Slater.
Here.
We do have quorum.
Thank you, Shelby. We don't have anybody signed up for public comment at this time. We'll move on to the consent calendar, Commissioner McKinley. Do you have a motion?
I do. I move we approve the April 20th minutes as the document shows.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And that was?
Augustine.
Thank you. It's hard to see with this screen. Thank you for the second discussion on the motion. All those will signify by saying aye and Shelby, if you would call the roll, please.
Commissioner Augustine.
Aye.
Commissioner Griggs.
Aye.
Commissioner Heller.
Aye.
Commissioner Kopcho.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinley.
Aye.
Commissioner Pollak.
Aye.
Commissioner Schweikart.
Aye.
And Commissioner Slater.
I was absent, so I will abstain.
And Commissioner Levin still hasn't joined yet, so I'll put him as absent.
Thank you. We'll keep an eye on, see when he signs in. So we'll move on to section 5.1. I'll continue case number VAR DAP 21-01 from the April 20th, 2021 hearing, which was the appeal of the variance and Class 2 driveway approach. We don't need to, Mr. Kapani. I see your hand raised, but John mute.
I just wanted to inquire if Commissioner Slater had had an opportunity to review the video and materials from the hearing and whether he'll be participating in the deliberations.
Thank you, Mr. Kapani. I have reviewed the materials and watched the video and will be participating.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that.
You bet. So we don't need to have Shelby read this statement of criteria because that was read last meeting, but have there been any ex parte contacts on this case since the last time we were together? And I don't see any hands raised. So we will move on. Olivia is going to be the staff. She's covering for Sally tonight. Not sure how long that straw was that she drew, but so Olivia, you want to take it away?
Yeah. Good evening. My name is Olivia Diaz. I'm with the Planning Division. I am filling in for Sally, who was unable to be here tonight. The Planning Commission continued the case number VAR DAP 2101 at their April 20th, 2011 meeting until tonight. The applicant has submitted additional written testimony, which was provided to the commissioners prior to tonight's meeting. I would like to enter those documents into the record. The additional information by the applicant did not address the decision criteria for the proposed variance. The lack of information and findings addressing the decision criteria is still deficient as addressed by the hearings officer's decision and addressed in the staff report from April 20th. The property, the property to be created by the partition will have frontage on Flarestone, a local street. Staff has not reviewed the creation of the land area proposed by the applicant for the driveway. Therefore, still the parcel, even after the partition application, will have frontage on a local street. The proposal does not meet the decision criteria. The applicant to date has not addressed that decision criteria related to the legal unit of land by itself with the partition. I am available for any questions and Tony Martin, the Assistant Traffic Engineer is available for any questions.
So if you guys could raise your hand, I'll, I'll start it off. It, I read the materials that the applicant sent to us and they seem to address the five concerns. So I'm curious from staff perspective, and I'll just take one because I bet you Commissioner Pollak will take the Neighborhood Association one, but they stated that they expected that that driveway permit that was going to be granted on the condition that the partitioning be recorded prior to the development, as was the other two applications that were approved for parcels two and three. So if, if that is the case, and they were under that assumption that that was going to be a condition placed on it, asked where the other two parcels, did you read that part? I can't read.
Do you want me to address that, Olivia?
Yes, go ahead, Lisa.
Hi, sure. I don't think the other two cases had driveways necessarily that met the same criteria as this. I don't think they had the same prohibition that's in the code because this is about a single-family driveway and those are multifamily developments, which are allowed to have driveways on major streets. I will note that the hearings officer in his decision, which is attachment 3 to your staff report, the top of page nine, he goes through about why he didn't think it was appropriate to put a condition of approval on there to say after the plat that the, you know, you can approve the driveway now based on the plat. And he says specifically that this, he notes that such a condition would still leave the hearings officer with a need to determine whether an application for the driveway access to serve a single-family residence on parcel one can be allowed. Hearings officer sees no evidence in the record that demonstrates that under the current zoning for parcel one, the site configuration proposed by the applicant must be approved. Accordingly, the hearings officer declines to impose a condition to address the timing of the proposal. And then his next paragraph, he talks about why it doesn't meet the criteria and what they have, haven't submitted. And specifically, he finds that the criteria for the variance, which is about the unreasonable practical difficulty or unreasonable hardship, was solely created by the applicant and their development of the land to date. There's nothing in the record that indicates that it was not created by the applicant. So that's, that's where he came from with not putting, not putting that condition.
That helps. That helps a lot. I don't see any hands raised. So the Neighborhood Association contact, isn't that just a conditional use that requires that presence at a Neighborhood Association?
So the, the Planning Commission might remember a few years ago, we changed the code to require neighborhood contact. So there's a few applications that actually require an applicant to go and present. Most applications like this one actually just require them to send an email to the Neighborhood Association prior to submittal. If they don't send it prior, they, they forgot, which, you know, is not uncommon, then we allow them just to send it later and show us that they, that they sent it. So it's just, it's just an email that's required with almost every land use application to the neighborhood.
So it sounds like really the sticky wicket is really the legal recording of the plat that.
Well, I mean, I think that's only, from our perspective, that's only one part because it, it right now has other, other streets that it can take access from, but I will note after the plat is recorded, the parcel that this house will potentially be on still has access on the local street. Sorry, it's creating that really large parcel, not that small parcel where they're showing that they want to put the house. So it doesn't meet the approval criteria for a driveway approach permit that specifically says you can't create a lot for a single family that will then have to have access on a local, on a major street like this. And then it just doesn't, to our understanding and the officers agreement, meet the criteria for granting a variance. So it's not, I don't think it's about the timing of the partition.
Got it. Okay. We've got three in the queue, Chris or Pollak, then followed by Kopcho and Slater. So Commissioner Pollak.
Okay, so my, the question is staff, first, our attorney, Kapani, Attorney Thomas Kapani, can I, are you there?
I am.
Okay, so it's, it's my understanding that an LLC requires any legal document to be signed by every LLC member unless an operation agreement states otherwise. Is that, that is, is that the case in, under Oregon law?
It's governed by the operating agreement. What will happen sometimes is that a the operating will, agreement will say that any one member can act on behalf of the LLC. Other times, they'll designate a manager to act on the behalf of the LLC. It really depends on how the LLC is formed in the particular document that creates the corporation.
That's my understanding too. Everybody signs unless the operation agreement says otherwise. So this question now is for Olivia. Did the, did the applicant provide you with any legally binding or operational agreement indicating that there were member managed or appointed members to sign on behalf of all members?
No.
Okay. Let's see. And I, I don't want to, I'll, I have another question, but I'll, I'll defer to the other commissioners first.
I'll come back to you, Commissioner Pollak. Commissioner Slater. I think Kopcho. Kopcho, sorry, Kopcho, sorry Slater. You're just, Commissioner Kopcho.
Thank you. Mine really is just a follow-up from yours in the initial one, just to clarify, maybe get it explicitly on record. So as Lisa was explaining it, one of the issues at hand is that this is a single-family driveway approach to the major street. So if this were a scenario where it is a multifamily project with a driveway approach, it would be a different story. Is that my understanding right?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I wanted. Thanks.
Great. Commissioner Slater.
Thank you. I have two questions. Lisa, I, I understood you to just say, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you cannot create a parcel, a single-family parcel on a minor arterial. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, so the driveway chapter says you can't, that they can't be served by a driveway if they're created through a partition or subdivision. So in other words, we don't want somebody to take a piece of property and divide it, and now we have a bunch of single-family driveways where instead they could do, you know, a street maybe, or give it access from a side street or something like that. So that the intent is to limit driveways and then to limit them from seagull family, which is just serving one house, you know, has, you know, would back out potentially on the streets, et cetera.
So that's very helpful. So this, my follow-up question, I guess, then is that the applicant in this case could not create a legal parcel for the triangular shape that they want to create because of driveway access. Is that, is that correct?
Right. So if parcel one is the kind of larger, three parcels were to come in for a new subdivision and further subdivide, it would be a problem then to give them access if they were going to, you know, try to have the driveway for this house on the right side of the creek, which I believe is why the applicant is asking for the driveway first, so that they could potentially secure that permission and then come in with their subdivision. Because if they can't secure that driveway, then they would need to think about instead how to do a different subdivision that serves, serves it from across the creek or something else.
I think I understand. Thank you.
Hey, Commissioner Pollak.
I, I forgot to ask Olivia a question on the other one. So I understand from the application, there are three members of this LLC, Takarski, Kane, and Hoyt. It looks like Kane and Takarski signed, but there's no signature for Hoyt. Do you have any document with Hoyt's signature on it?
I, I'm unsure. My, my understanding though is that there's also other property owners who own the bigger parcel, which is what, what Sally was asking for was Mountain West to sign and also the property owner who owns across Mildred to sign, since it's all one parcel of land currently.
The, the applicant in this case provided a warranty deed where this property was provided to the LLC, I think, what is it? The construction company?
Right. So the property was sold prior to the legal property being created. So the legal unit of land includes all three parcels of that partition. They sold the land without the approval of a plat. So technically, the parse, the legal unit of land is still all three parcels together until the partition plat is recorded.
Okay. Okay, so which is the basic sticky wiki of this thing. Okay, and the other thing, just to address the Neighborhood Association. I understand from, from the table on our, on, in the unified code that really only the conditional use and the, what is it? The, the and the variance in the, in the Class 3, whatever it was, if we review or, or that thing. They're the only ones that actually need to notify the Neighborhood Association. See, other stuff do not. And I, I see from the application they provided us that on both of those applications, they did check, they notified the Neighborhood Association with an email. So as far as I'm concerned, that's a compliance that it showed that they, on the application, they said they pre, prior to, on May, prior to the application, they did notify the Neighborhood Association on the two land use matters that require notice. So I don't know why that's an issue. So I think that.
No, to clarify, so those are two different previous land use applications that went through their own process and approval. Those aren't part, the, the applications they submitted in their testimony, they're showing previous applications on the same property.
Oh.
The actual application for this, they checked no, and this is a variance, and it does require that they notify the neighborhood by email. So they didn't do it for this application. They did it for previous applications on the property.
So they didn't show, so they say, so this evidence that they provided us isn't for the current application?
Right. I believe what they're saying is that Sally didn't ask them to do it. She didn't point out that they hadn't done it in the letter she sent them. And they're saying, you know, we see we've done it before and Sally didn't ask for us to do it this, this time, I think is what they're trying to say. I'm sure Mark is here and he'll explain what his intent was with this follow-up.
My issue is, is that it's in the code and, and the attorney will, our attorney will understand when I say this, ignorance of the law is no defense. So, you know, just because nobody has to tell them when it's actually in the code. They gotta, I mean, these guys are engineers. They should know. So just.
I will say for the record that not notifying the neighborhood is not enough of a reason for us to deny an application. If that were the only thing, right? We would work with them to try to get them to send the email after the fact. And obviously, we notify the Neighborhood Association numerous times throughout a land use application, but since they didn't meet the other criteria and we were writing a recommendation for a denial, we felt like it was important just to list all of the things that we found that were deficient in their application. So.
And I think that's true because the thing is, the thing is the Neighborhood Associations and a lot of people really worked hard to get that prior notice before an application is filed. That way, they could work out all the bugs before it gets to the costly part of everything. And just not to do it is, 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 you know, we, we don't want to do it, do any actions. It's a slippery slope to go back the way it was. Because obviously now when staff issues to report, it's moot because now they know about it. But again, we, we want to make sure that it's on the record that it's not exactly, we, we don't exactly are happy with that. Okay, so thank you.
Do I have other questions of staff at this time? We will have one more opportunity to quiz Olivia. Seeing none, would the applicant like to have, make some comments? You've got 15 minutes and for the record, please state your name and address again.
Good evening. My name is Mark Grins with Multitec Engineering. Our office is at 1155 13th Street Southeast here in Salem. And we, again, we're representing the applicant in this matter. So I'm, I'm sure that I did everything I could to make this as cute, as confusing as I could for what I was trying to do. At the prior hearing, what I committed to do was to provide the Planning Commission with the information, the, a narrative that, or, and/or information that supported what we had provided the staff or the rationale we had used for why, why that record is the way it is relative to the items that, that staff pointed out that were not provided. And, and that's what I was attempting to do with this. I was trying, I was not trying to be disparaging to staff in any way. I just wanted to point out that, that the things that were, that, that they had asked, that they, that they indicated that we hadn't supplied by way of notice, how, how those things came to us, what, what it was we, we felt we needed to provide and the rationale we used to get there. Now, the, the fact that this, this property is part of, is made up of three separate ownerships as one parcel, we understand that, but we followed the same process that we had followed on, on two other applications where we provided the deed to the city and the signature of the owners for the parcel that was contained in the deed, that was the part that was being affected. I gave you an example in my stuff for the property that, that was across the street on what would be parcel three, whereby all we provided for that application was that the deed for parcel three and the signatures of the owners for parcel three. And then, and that, that appeared to be an acceptable process at that time. And, and so that was the reason we followed that same process again. And, and it wasn't, at least in our opinion, wasn't clear that what staff was asking for was the signatures of all, of the owners of all three parcels. So and I refer to them as parcels because that's how they're being plotted. There's, there's three deeds, but, but that was the purpose of that was, and was not to, to try to, was not to try to be as confusing as apparently as I was. The, the same thing with regard to, to the most current deed. We, we believed that we had provided the most current deed for the property that Mr. Hilton owned. And that's what we, we did. So again, what I was trying to do here was just simply to make sure that it, that, that you knew what process we had followed and why we had made the choices we did so that it wasn't a case of staff asks us for all this stuff and we just said, no, we're not going to give it to you, deem the application complete because that's not the, that's not what happened. In my evaluation with my staff, that's not the way that went. We, we provided the information that we thought we were, that we needed to in a, in the manner that was being requested and the incomplete notice as well. We addressed, we felt we addressed that information. This prop, this process started as a driveway approach permit, doesn't require a pre-app, doesn't require notice to the Neighborhood Association. That's how this started. Staff recommended through, after some discussions that we needed to apply for a variance as part of the application. So we filed the variance application. We didn't go back and notify the Neighborhood Association because we didn't, we didn't believe that since this was an add-on, that that was an important part of the process. Apparently it was, but we didn't believe it that way. And the same thing for a pre-app, we didn't believe that a pre-app was necessary because we'd already had lots of discussions with staff about what we were trying to do and how we got there. Again, that it, it may very well be that, that we missed, that we misinterpreted, but I'm just telling you, that's how we got where we got here. It wasn't intended to be in not following the process. It was just, it was the process that we followed. So I just want to be sure that that's, that you understood that that's what I was trying to do with this. That's what I committed to do at the last hearing. And, and hopefully, hopefully I didn't make it too difficult for everybody to see because I, I, I think that we, we had a logical reason for, and a good intent for how we got where we got to. As to the criteria, I didn't intend to provide any additional information to address the criteria tonight because I have provided orally in my testimony, both before the hearings officer and before the planning commission last time, what I believe are the, are the extenuating hardship conditions that make it unreasonable to expect that property, this piece of property, if it's going to have a single-family house on it, to take access off of Flarestone. I truly believe, I didn't create the creek. I didn't create the parcel boundaries and I didn't create the zoning boundaries that exist. The zoning boundaries are there. We've already outlined that you can't, you can't take single-family access through the IC zone, can't do that. We, we, we've tried to make that pitch, got told no. I know that staff has said we could do a conditional use to get there. We, we don't have any record that that was ever advised to us, but that's fine. We can, we understand that, but, but we tried to show how we could do it and we got told no. So that's not an option to us. And I don't believe that anybody believes it's a good idea for a single-family driveway to take access across Wall Creek, build a bridge or some expensive crossing, disrupt the repairing corridor in order to do that. That, that, that is, that is still a reasonable approach that, that doesn't support my case, which is that we have a hardship and that taking a driveway access off of Mildred is the most reasonable way to do it. So I believe that the other criteria that was, that, that's part of the, the request have been adequately, have been adequately addressed by us and like either in writing or in the discussions that I've provided. And with that, I'd be happy to answer your questions. Like you said, that's, my intention was, was only to try to make sure that you knew what we had provided, why we had provided in the format that we did and why we had provided the response to staff at the time we did, which was to deem the application complete because we felt we had provided everything that we had been asked to provide. So like I said, with that, if you have any questions, we, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Grins. Commissioner Schweikart.
Thank you. So just to confirm, Mark, so in the materials that you provided for this hearing, at the bottom of page six of that packet of information, can I just confirm that, that last paragraph on page six is the totality of the response to staff's January 27th email?
I believe, I believe that's correct, yeah.
Okay. So I guess, you know, one of the things that, that I'm having a hard time with is that in attachment A, which thank you very much for providing attachment A, you know, there, it's five pages of items that the staff considers to be incomplete for this application. So, you know, that's fairly substantial, five pages worth of things that the staff thinks are currently incomplete. And what I'm trying to understand is, after receiving that incomplete letter with five pages of items that are considered incomplete, why not express your confusion, ask for clarification, confirm your understanding of the staff's concerns, express why you disagree with those concerns? Why not give that response and further this, the conversation with staff? Why just submit that one paragraph that you quoted at the bottom of page six?
Yeah, I, so I understand what, what you're asking for. So I think that, that to, just to, to be sure that I'm not misinterpreting the, the information there. Yes, there were, there were five pages. There's, but there was just a few items that were deemed as completeness issues. The others that were the criteria and we had already provided written, written information relative to the criteria.
Which, which the staff is stating in, in their attachment A, in that letter from January 27th, they don't believe, they, they, they're, obviously you guys are not on the same page because they don't believe you've met the criteria. So, so, you know, if, if that was clear that they didn't believe you met it, why not further engage with communication on that?
I, I can't, I can't, I can't, I'm not the, I'm not the person that was, that was doing this. I can't explain why, I can't explain or nor can I explain whether or not there were discussions that took place between my staff and staff relative to those, because there were discussions that took place. So I don't, so I don't know that why there wasn't additional information provided there. And, and again, at the public hearing, both with the hearings officer and, and since then, I have, I have attempted to provide the verbal information that supports why, why in each of those criteria, we believe that, that we have provided sufficient information to address the criteria. And, and though, so I again, what I, what I was trying to do here was to make sure that, that you, you knew that we didn't just blow staff off. That wasn't what we did. We double-checked all the information, like made sure that what we thought we had provided was most current deed, that we thought we had provided the right ownership information there and that, and then we, and we did provide a plan that's, what we called an existing conditions plan. We did provide that to staff, which was one of the items where it showed what, showed the trees and showed the, the existing conditions on the site. That was provided to staff at that.
Okay. And can I have a follow-up question?
Yes, follow-up.
Sure. Sure. Um, and so I guess, did you then, were you surprised by staff's recommendation to the hearing officer then?
No, we, we knew that staff was not supporting the, the variance request. We knew that.
Okay, okay. Um, a, a, and within that hearing officer, uh, uh, summary that we received uh, on our, for our April 20th, um, meeting, um, there, there is, I mean, this, this is a lot. They gave us a lot of information. Um, and I guess one other thing I, I would want to call your attention to um, is on page nine of their, um, hearing officer summary. They talk about, um, the issue of the creation of a hardship. And they talk about, um, kind of where they, you know, in terms of being able to find some sort of documentation or justification provided by the applicant that would document that the hardship had, uh, hardship had been, uh, created external to the applicant. Um, and, and, and they, they say that they, they're, they cannot find that that hardship was uh, created by some external reason, um, but that it's resulting in the design of the applications, uh, 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 how they're designing the site. So I would love to hear kind of your response to the hearing officer's comments on that.
Well, it's, it's, it's as I stated with, at, both at the hearings officer's hearing and, and, and I did at the planning's hearing. The property, the, 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 this piece of property, this residential, this RS or RA zone piece of property sits on the east side of the creek. We didn't create the creek. That was existing. The property to immediately to the east of this, which is the proposed parcel two, was already zoned for some, for a use other than single family residential before our client acquired the property. We didn't create the zone. That zone existed. So the, whether you have an approved apartment site on that or not, the zone is there and by code, you can't take access to there unless you apply for some other a condition use or some other way to do that. So we didn't create that. So I didn't create the creek and I didn't create the zoning. How, how is it that I have a har, that I've created a hardship that, that, that I've created or my client has created the hardship? I don't see how, how we're responsible for that. What we have is a piece of property that could be utilized for a single family residence. But, but forced to cross the creek will likely not ever be used that way. It's just too, it's too costly heavy to do that. So the only way it's going to be used for the, uh, in the manner in which it's zoned today is to take a driveway access off of Mildred. There isn't any other, other way that it's going to be, that it's going to function for anything other than a, an empty piece of property.
Did you have a follow-up, Commissioner Schweikert?
Uh, no, I'll let other folks, uh, ask questions.
Commissioner Levin.
Thank you, President Griggs. Uh, Mark, um, and I guess, uh, if I'm not allowed to ask, uh, this question, um, maybe Tom, you can, uh, step in and, and say if, if we should discuss this or not. My question, I'll state it and then give a second for, um, anyone to weigh in. Uh, because it relates around the parties that are, that purchased the property and the, the part, the proposed partition plan and how it came to that. Did the parties involved decide to partition, uh, the property between one and two at that particular north-south boundary, um, or sorry, the boundary that runs north-south, um, east of Wallen Creek? Because of the, where the different zones met? Or was there something else um, driving where that property boundary landed?
That property boundary was selected uh, for between parcels one and two was selected because that was the zone line. Because we couldn't, we couldn't develop, we couldn't do any development that was associated with, with, uh, with the commercial zones, zone in the residential zone and we couldn't do anything in the, and we couldn't do anything in the residential zone that was associated with the commercials on. So that, that create, that created the point at which the, that, that property division should take place.
We can get confirmation, Commissioner Levin, when we go back to staff section questions after, after Mr. Grins is finished with his questions, just to get clarification from Tom, too.
Okay. A, a follow-up on that, Mark. Um, uh, is there a path that has been, that you're familiar with or that you've used before? Um, where a partition has been proposed and then a rezone because of a split zoning that was occurred of that new partition? Um, what I'm thinking is if, if, if there was a legal path, is there a legal path forward where the applicants could have applied to put that, let's say on the creek and then go clean up the split zone on partial, part, parcel two?
The only process that I'm aware of that we would have had, that we would have been able to follow would have been to go through a combined zone change in order to have done that.
Okay. Okay. No more questions?
Okay, great. Other questions of Mr. Grins? Not seeing any hands raised. Thank you, Mark, for your time again. Um, we don't have, do we have questions of staff at this point? Commissioner Levin, did you want to clarify anything with, um, counsel? Are you good?
I'm good as long, I mean, nobody jumped in. I didn't hear Lisa say you can't ask that or Tom say no, so I'm good.
Okay. Commissioner Slater, you have a question?
I have a question, Lisa, if I may.
Sure.
Lisa, what, what is the impact or typically what is the impact on the riparian zone of installing, um, a bridge or driveway across the riparian zone?
Well, I'm not sure that I know. It's probably something that's more review with Public Works. Um, they may have to put in a culvert, you know, remove native vegetation potentially. Um, I don't know, Olivia. That's a little outside of our, our wheelhouse.
And I guess the reason I ask is it seems like the choice that we have here is allow a driveway onto, um, Mildred or accept a driveway across the riparian zone. It looks like those are either of the outcome. One of those two outcomes will happen from tonight's decision.
Sorry, my, my dog is really unhappy. Um, I, I don't know if those are the two, two options. Uh, the property could be rezoned and then it could have a driveway on the main street if it was multifamily. I'll bring to your attention in the incomplete letter that we offered to rezone it, uh, to multifamily, uh, through our Salem for them. That's in the incomplete letter. It was an alternative staff provided. They could still pursue the access through the apartments, um, to the east with a conditional use permit and a, and a redesign of those apartments. So I think there's other choices, um, besides just saying that it doesn't matter that they don't meet the criteria and approving it tonight. Or you could find that they meet the criteria. I mean, obviously that's within the purview of the commission tonight, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, Tom?
Just to, um, uh, pivot off of what Lisa said, uh, another choice you have is that uh, this decision can wait until the, the property is further subdivided. One of uh, the things that I think, uh, could be a concern is that by making a decision today, uh, you may be, there may be unknown impacts to the other property owners of the, of the parcels uh, that are, um, uh, you know, who haven't, wait, you know, haven't signed off on the application and, um, uh, we're not sure how those properties are going to be further subdivided. So one thing you can do is simply say, well, uh, consideration of this issue is, uh, should come in at the time of the, uh, further subdivision. And so you don't have to say no, you can just say not now, would essentially be, um, uh, a, a, another possible response.
So Tom, would that be, um, under the remand category? If we're remanding it back to the public, to the hearings officer, would that be then held in bay until that happened?
Well, I think what you would do is, I mean, I think you would end up saying, you would end up denying the request now, but you would append your, uh, denial by saying, you know, this matter can be reconsidered at the time that the property is, uh, further subdivided.
That's helpful. Um, kidoki. Any other questions of staff at this time? Not seeing any. Um, I don't have anybody signed up from the neighborhood association, nor do I have anybody signed up to testify from the public. Uh, so Mr. Grins, you have the opportunity to come back and rebut anything that we've talked about and you have five minutes if you would like to use that.
Thank you very much. So again, I, 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 I cannot find anything in our information that says that we were, that we were told by staff that we could do a conditional use and that would allow us to take access through the IC property from this property. I know Lisa has said that, but I can't find anything in our documentation, emails or anything that supports that. We were told, we, we were told we could not take access that way. So that's why that was not pursued. And, and to tell me today that that's an option doesn't, doesn't change where we're at. We're here because we didn't know that was a viable option to us. So we're here. The only other options we have were the rezone, which yes, staff did tell us that we could, we could wait and our Salem could do it. And that's an unknown timeframe. And our client felt that, that he had, he had a better use for that property today. And the end felt that there was a need for housing and that housing could be achieved this way. And, and so that was the reason that, that we did that. And we, we firmly believe that, that any expectation that we would build a bridge for a large culvert to get access to the other side of the creek for this property would, would be seen logically by, by everybody to be an unreasonable uh, ex, approach. So that's why we are here. And I, and I'm not sure that when we come back and do a subdivision that we won't be, it's, we won't end up in exactly the same spot. If I don't do something to change the zone on this property and I'm subdividing the other piece, won't I be in the same spot where I'm sitting here saying it's unreasonable to build a driveway across Wall Creek through the riparian corridor? So it, that's fine. And I understand what Tom is saying, that the other property owners, the other parcel property owners haven't had a chance to weigh in. I don't, I don't s- see where the driveway here has any impact on their property, but I, I'm not, I'm not the pro, proposing to be the legal expert on that. They are aware of what we're doing because all the property owners have talked about all the different things that each one are trying to do. So they're aware of it, but that, if that's, if that's the position everyone wants to take, then, then that, that is what it is. So so we're, we're in this string because of the, the, of the steps that we have taken or the paths that we've been told to try to take. And, and it's, and it's, I can see lots of looking back, I can see lots of things here, but, but I'm here because of, that's the path I was directed to take. And I, like I said, I firmly believe that we've provided enough information from our standpoint that supports the fact that we don't have another option. If, if we're going to develop this piece of property for this, in the way it's zoned, there isn't any other option but to take a driveway off of Mildred. But with that, I, I, I've taken enough of everybody's time tonight, so.
Thank you, Mr. Grins.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any last opportunity for questions of staff at this time? Seeing, not wanting to rush anybody, I will look to Vice President McKinley for a motion, please.
Madam President, I move that we adopt the staff report for public hearing 5.1.
Do I have a second?
For the purpose of conversation, I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, let's talk about it. Raise your hand, please, if you would like to make a comment. We'll discuss this item. Uh, Commissioner Levin?
Aside from the conversation about the, the logistics of the, the application, and I'd really like to hear from my fellow commissioners on their, uh, their issues with that part of, uh, this conversation. Looking at the parcels and, and how this, um, this certain piece sits and where the creek is, I, I will say that it, it, from a real estate standpoint, it is very natural to look at the, the abutting zones when demising property and to, or partitioning property and to follow that. And, and in doing so, natural features, uh, create the conflicts or the boundaries that, that then would generate some type of, uh, opportunity for a condition. So i- it's really interesting that we're talking about, was the hardship created by the applicants partitioning or, or was it actually already there, but, um, because of the, the prior shape of the land, um, and having multiple zones on it, th- then, you know, I, I don't know if we're giving enough weight to that or not, a- as we're looking at, is there a very easily identifiable hardship for this piece of property with this, uh, pending partition? And then I would also want to say that, um, to Mr. Slater's question about the, um, the, the bridge and the impact on the riparian, um, corridor. Um, there's the, the cost to do that would not reflect the home that would be built or the future value of that home. And, um, not to say that somebody doesn't deserve it there, but as far as what a, a builder or developer would put in, the costs would be, I would estimate in the hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that creek crossing for that one home. And yes, there would be, there is a noted impact. I've been a part of a couple feasibility studies. And the way I understand how the EPA looks at this kind of stuff, which you do have to involve the EPA in doing just a crossing of this Wallen Creek and get approval from them. So you're bringing in the state, the Fed. There's a whole lot of other oversight besides the city of Salem, but there is a assumed amount of impact that does occur no matter what. And so, um, if the goal was to not impact a waterway any more than we already have, then we would be kind of looking at what access can be taken off of a street. Um, and so, uh, it, I want to say that I can almost see a path there, but that's why I want to hear from my fellow commissioners. The distance off the corner of the intersection with, I think it's Woodsey or Woodside, um, would be a, um, as, uh, uh, what is it? A calming measure to traffic because of that intersection, there'll be natural slowing occurring. And I think the intent of this development standard or this code was to eliminate single-family residential traffic pulling out onto higher speed roads where at this point, uh, Mildred is not uh, that higher speed, higher volume that is associated, I think, with, is it a minor arterial? Um, I think this is what this class was. I may have that terminology wrong, but, uh, those are those are the things that I'm looking at and trying to piece together. If this, i- if this meets the criteria, if it's justified, and if, if there is really nothing better alternative for these, um, parcels. Um, so, uh, and then I want to make one last comment. And this isn't a jab at the planner involved so much as an observation about the process, but there was a comment by the planner in the original hearing that they, they can't control the applicant on where they want to partition the land. But I would push back and say, no, you are very much responsible and a part of that process because you are involved. And I can think of several partition, uh, plans that I was a part of where the input of where a partition should go or shouldn't go was provided by planning staff. And there was lots of conversation and banter back and forth about it. So I, I think that, that staff can't say that we're totally hands-off in how parcels one, two, and three ended up. Um, there's, there's too much knowledge and understanding about following like zone boundaries and whatnot to say that they're totally hands-off in how the applicant got to here or applicants got to here. Um, so please, other commissioners, um, give comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Levin. I always appreciate your perspective. Um, two things for the record, the public hearing was Two things for the record, the public hearing was closed at 6:16. My guiding North Star Shelby reminded me, I forgot to do my invisible gavel. And then we did not note that the Commissioner Levin joined us at 5:38, so those two items for the record. And thank you again, Shelby. Commissioner Schweikart followed by Commissioner Pollock.
Thanks, and I appreciate Ian's comments. And there's a lot of his comments that I agree with. I will say that I also have personal experience with Riparian areas, and I don't know, I don't know enough about this creek area to say if it would be considered navigable waters, but that distinction then brings in Army Corps of Engineers, probably DEQ. You have a lot of folks who do a lot of permitting that add cost to building, you know, a bridge or a road over an environmentally sensitive area. So, I am not thinking about this from the perspective of that being a plausible option. I think the way that I am thinking about the decision here is with respect to reasonable alternatives to the application that was provided to us. I believe that in terms of the alternative options that were submitted to the applicant in that January 27th letter, number two and number three are reasonable alternatives. And I don't think that we are required to approve something just because the applicant doesn't like those reasonable alternatives. You know, and I guess I would argue that also, you know, the thought in thinking about this site, that I don't have any disagreement with what Ian said in terms of like, I don't fault them for the partition decision being based on where the zoning currently is and being based on like existing topographical features. That's fine. I do think this does seem kind of out of sequence and out of sync. And I think that staff raised that issue, and that was pretty much ignored, which, you know, I'm not really sure why. Because it does, it does seem like this could be, as Tom pointed out, something that could be approved at a later date once the partition application was through. Because then there would, I think, be less confusion, less issues in which the applicant and the staff disagree. And so I just, I guess I'd say that the way that I'm viewing this is about the reasonable alternative options that were presented. And, you know, it's that, so that's the biggest thing for me. There's also something to be said, so this is kind of a separate issue. I think there's something to be said about the process of going through these applications by the development community to the city government in good faith. And I do not feel like this process was completed through to its fruition in a way that was done in good faith. Because I believe that further communication between staff and the applicant was easily available to them after they received that January 27th letter. And I don't, I'm still, I still don't feel like I had gotten a reasonable explanation for why there couldn't have been more of a meeting of the minds, of a getting on the same page, of clarifying why staff did not feel like the criteria were bad. So, you know, I will say that the process is actually important because we have to be able to evaluate how the application was, came in, how issues that staff brought up were revised as part of this process along the planning commission. So, I'll say that as well.
Yeah, I agree, Commissioner Schweikart. I think there were some opportunities that communication could probably have been more taken advantage of. Commissioner Pollock, you have your hand raised.
Yes, okay, so the basis, the first thing is, I think, I couldn't have put it better than Commissioner Schweikart on this, but I just point out some things like, the whole thing of the driveway is moot because it's not a legal, you know, it's not a legal partition. You know, they haven't done, they haven't done their partition, they haven't done the legal matters to get to this point for us to make a decision. And then, and then, not to contradict, but to point out, not to contradict Commissioner Levin, but on page 13 of the staff report, it does say the proposed driveway access for the single-family used onto Mildred Lane, it's a high-capacity street. It's not allowed. So, it is a high-capacity street. And then, and even though, if we look at page 15 of the hearings officer, even though the staff may agree might not adversely affect on the functionality of Jason Street, the hearing officer notes that there's not sufficient evidence in the record to determine that. So, I actually think that I'm going to go with denying this with the provision as suggested by attorney is that, I feel this is a cart before the horse thing. Legal things weren't done. I agree with Commissioner Schweikart that why weren't they done? Why didn't they work, you know? I mean, things such as basic signatures of all the other, I mean, how many times have we gone forward to the staff, the hearings officer, this appeal, the continuing, and you still don't have any signatures? For goodness sakes. I think that, you know, I think that, you know, we need to.
I think I'm hearing you possibly putting out another motion. We can have two on the table at a time.
No, I'm like, I would consider that if somebody puts it forward, but at this point, I think it's I'm not, I'm going to go with denying it.
Okay, Commissioners Slater.
Well, this is turned out to be a very interesting application for a driveway entrance. And I found myself agreeing with every single argument being made by my colleagues, which is a difficult situation to be in. I'm actually very sympathetic to the applicant, given the position of where he is on that landscape. And as I mentioned before, I am concerned about an alternative that would force a a bridge across the Riparian area. It seems to me that an entrance onto Mildred is a much better outcome for the public. Commissioner Pollock mentioned that it is a high-capacity street. I regret not asking staff how many private single-family entrances, driveway entrances are on Mildred, because I think if you look before and after where that particular parcel is, there are a number of entrances on and off Mildred. I mean, it is, it's a street that has different kinds of driveway approaches throughout the course of that street. So, I'm not so concerned about the high-capacity issue, the safety issue. I am having a bit of a hard time getting past the fact that we don't have, you know, a legal property unit here and the deficiencies with the application. I think if those had been addressed, it'd be much easier for me to be sympathetic and be supportive of this application. I don't know if it's possible for us to require as a condition of approving the driveway permit that it become a legal property. I don't know what the steps are for that, but that is certainly something that I would consider.
So, Commissioner Slater, I believe in the hearing, the staff pointed out that those other homes that have access onto Mildred Lane had that access before that was classified as the high-impact arterial, the minor arterial. So, those were prior, nothing's been approved residentially after the arterial designation, is my understanding. Commissioner Pollock, did you have your hand raised on that one?
I was going to say that exact same thing.
Okay.
That there was evidence in the record that told us that that was done way before the code.
Yeah. Further conversation on the motion. Okay, I'm not seeing any. So, I'll get Shelby to call the roll, please, on the motion, which is to affirm the March 16th, 2021 decision denying the BARDAP 21-01. Shelby, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Augustine?
Here. Aye, sorry.
Commissioner Griggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Heller?
Aye.
Commissioner Copcho?
Aye.
Commissioner Levin? Do you want me to circle back, Commissioner Levin? Oh, you're muted, I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
Okay, so circle back, that's what I'm doing, right? Okay, Commissioner McKinley?
Aye.
Commissioner Pollock?
Aye.
Commissioner Schweikart?
Aye.
Commissioner Slater?
I'm going to follow in line and say aye.
And Commissioner Levin?
This is a really hard one for me, but I agree with my colleagues. I'm going to vote aye.
Thank you. So, you've got to vote down, it was unanimous?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you all for that. It was a good discussion. Moving on, on the agenda, we don't have any special orders of business, nor do we have information reports. And we still don't have anybody from the public signed up to comment to us. So, we're ready for you, Lisa, for the planning administrators' report.
Sure, just a couple of things to note. On the 18th, we do have two public hearings for comp plan zone changes. And then it's not on the fly sheet, but June 1st, is that the right date? Yeah, Shelby, I'll tell me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, June 1st and June 15th, yeah.
So, we do have work sessions scheduled for some code amendments. So, June 1st, we're going to do the House Bill 2001 code amendment. So, that's the duplex, triplex, fourplex cottage cluster townhouse. So, Bryce and Eunice are working like mad to get those ready, so we can walk through those as a commission and get your comments on them. And then we'll have another batch of code amendments to go over on the 15th, probably the code amendments for the micro camping and the tent camping, and then probably some other UDC amendments, as many as we can get through. We have a whole list that we're working on. So, we might also have public hearings those nights. I think there's still some time for those to be scheduled, but or is there still time for June 1st, Shelby?
Yeah, Monday, technically. But I would hope that people would have gotten it to me right now, but they still have till Monday, so.
Like herding cats with poor Shelby, planners in line. So, it could be our only thing on that night, which might be good. And so, just a reminder, when we did work sessions on the code amendments before, we also used that as our kind of public outreach tool. So, we'll send notice to all the neighborhood associations and developers, et cetera, that might be interested. And there'll be opportunity for public comment on the code amendments that night as well. So, and then we have still our Salem policy meetings are going on, so every Wednesday. Should know what tomorrow's is. I think it's natural resources, is that right? Dang, we're doing so much our Salem stuff, and I feel like I can't keep.
Natural resources, natural hazards, and resiliency.
There we go. And then last Friday, we had our first our Salem zoning subcommittee meeting, so thank you to the four of you that were there. And I'm sure you guys can share your thoughts on it, instead of me telling everybody how I thought it went. I thought it was, like I said at the time, really fun. I thought it was great. And we think we're going to need to add another meeting, because there's so much to talk about. We didn't even get through half of it, I think, that we had scheduled for that first meeting, but that's okay. And then you should be getting our Salem, just emails, I think, from Eunice. So, you might have seen that the interactive zoning map is online now. So, we did that before with the comp plan, so people could go in and drop comments on the draft comp plan, and now we've picked what zones we think would go with those new comp plan designations. So, if it said mixed use before, we've now picked, you know, mixed use 1, mixed use 2, mixed use 3, et cetera, and launched that to the public. It's getting, in certain parts of town, it is very hot topic right now. So, I'd say 80% of the comments are from West Salem on that map. And lots of accompanying phone calls and emails. And we've heard that there's inaccurate flyers being printed and passed out to neighbors in West Salem, so.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. So, if you hear that we're rezoning a current park for apartments, the answer is no, that is false, that is not true. We're not rezoning any parks to multifamily. There's some vast confusion about that in West Salem, so if you hear that rumor, please correct folks. But if you have a chance to look at the zoning map and drop your comments and share it, then please, please do. It'll be open for about another month as we're doing outreach on that part, so. That's all I have.
I think Commissioner Pollock has a question for you.
Another question, this little quick statement is, have you gotten any, any interest in my position? But I just want to let you know that Shane, for your Rotary or for any other commissioners, if I have a little spiel that puts together a little, kind of little bio with an attachment to our, what we've done in the past and our annual report, and anybody that wants it, just email me and I can forward that, all that to them, so they'll know, you know, what's involved when they apply. So, I just want to make sure, I'm trying to make sure as many people as I can know about this position.
Yes, you're doing a great job. And when it gets a little closer, the city will post it like on our Facebook page and Community Connections. It's a little early, so we haven't done that yet. But I don't think, I think maybe there's just one application that's been submitted recently that I've seen, so.
Oh, the West Side newspaper said that they were going to put it in the West Side, so.
Good. I think Commissioner Schweikart also has a question. I apologize, because I skipped right over you.
No, it's fine. So, I have so much to say about this planning administrator's report, you have no idea, Lisa. Okay, so, the first thing is that I really think it's great that the interactive zoning map went out, because I think that it did get people's attention in a way that maybe previous our Salem communication has not. Like, when my real estate agent is emailing me, like, to be like, hey, wait a minute! There's a multifamily right next to my home! Like, I'm like, oh, people are seeing this, okay! So, that was like, I'm glad, I'm very happy about that, that people are seeing it. One of the things that, and so just to give kind of an update on the zoning subcommittee meeting that happened last Friday, you know, I thought that there were really a lot of good questions that were asked of, about the six zoning options that were being put forward. We only got through three of them, so we're really only like halfway through, you know, kind of learning about those options and getting some, you know, getting the city council members and the planning commissioners to talk about them, and then getting feedback from the public. And so, the, you know, I think that they are pretty weighty issues. And so, I'm glad that there's a lot of conversation that was had, so that we only got through three in 90 minutes to two hours, or however long it took.
Two hours.
Two hours, okay. One of the things I was going to ask, though, Lisa, is, so, because it struck me, the very, very end of the meeting, one of the, I feel like one of the counselors maybe made a comment about like being grateful to hear from the planning commissioners, because, you know, kind of hearing kind of the framework by which we're thinking about these issues of the six zoning options. And it made me realize that, like, we have some really new counselors on this group. And I wonder how many of them, because in terms of like my frame of reference and how I frame up these zoning options, I, you know, I really think a lot about the, like, the fact that we have this going back to 2014 Housing Needs Analysis, that so much of the decisions that come before the commission, but also so much of like the kind of, you know, a driving factor, a driving component to thinking about, you know, what were, what kind of outstanding issues that the city faces that we're resolving through our Salem, or could be, could be resolving through our Salem. And so, you know, for those brand-new counselors, you know, it might be good, I don't know, you may already have shared this material with them, but just so that they are familiar with the fact that, you know, we have, we've all been first in the Housing Needs Analysis, and we get the updates, you know, whatever it is, but, you know, every, you know, every six months or something about kind of how how the multifamily deficit that we have is being, you know, chipped away at. But it might be helpful for them to have that information as well.
Yeah, absolutely, and I'll just, you might have more to say, but to that point, the housing update that we provided the planning commission, I think it was just the last meeting, we are going to have that as an info report on the next council agenda on Monday. So, normally I just email them the memo that we sent to you guys and say, we sent this to the planning commission, here you go. But the city manager thought this time we should actually put it as a report on their agenda to kind of elevate it, you know, because, you know, a lot of them say thank you to my email, but it's like, they get a lot of information. And, but we did present specifically about the housing needs analysis as part of the R Salem presentation, both the joint work session, which was last fall, the counselors that are new that had already been elected but weren't seated in their positions, did attend that work session. Although that was like, you know, I'm sure one of many things that the city was throwing at them is like, now you're on council, learn all these things. And then when the, our Salem was accepted by council in March, that was, that was part of it as well. But I do, I was worried when three of the four counselors that were picked are brand new. Because land use, you know, it takes a while. I think you have to go through a few cases and then some of the stuff like, oh, I remember when staff said this, or like you have some sort of frame of reference. And this year at council since January, we haven't really had any land use. It's been pretty quiet for, for land use. We had a really contentious annexation last week. And that was really their first land use. And it's very rare for us to have any contentious annexations. And so the end, they were like, wow, this land use is, is tough. And I was like, yeah, there's, there's gonna be more of this. Like this is common on council. Which, you know, you guys obviously go through all the time and, and the rest of the counselors are pretty used to it. So, councillor Hoy, of course, is, has a lot of that experience. And so he was talking about how the new council is gonna be a learning experience. So, I do think it's really helpful. And some of them talked to me afterwards about how they felt the planning commission comments were really helpful because I know you guys have been in the trenches with, with the land use. So it's a good balance on the committee, I think, though.
Yeah. I had one other follow-up question, which is that during our, not April twentieth, I mean, you know, yeah, it was the first meeting in April. There was a discussion of some of the bills that are currently in, going through the legislative session right now and potential impacts. And unless I'm wrong, I heard a story yesterday on NPR that the bill that had to do with like, easing restrictions on where you can put a homeless shelter did actually pass. I mean, it still needs to be signed by the governor. And so I, I assume that you guys are tracking on that. And so I'm just, you know, kind of interested in, once you have some follow-up, kind of like when you think that that, that would be kind of incorporated into some of the potential changes moving forward.
Yeah, I think that was the, I think it's twenty-six hundred, Houseville twenty-six hundred. I was just reading about, yeah, Eunice told me today that it passed. So we're waiting for a signature. That, there's a lot of bills about citing homeless shelters or turning hotels into homeless shelters. There's a lot of not, notwithstanding land use. So there's a lot of bills that just like throw land use out for, for housing and what, whatnot. So, yeah, we're tracking all of them. I think that one specifically won't need to go in the zoning code because it's basically a temporary preemption of zoning. So, it'll just say if you have a site that meets these very limited characteristics, the city has to approve a homeless shelter there. And so there's like basically no zoning that applies. And they just have to meet like fire, life and safety for the site and say that they're near transit or near a street or something. It's very limited. The bill was on the books in the emergency session, was that last summer? And we approved, we approved two homeless shelters under it. And it was only effective for ninety days.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, it expired. And so now this one just is revamping it. And I think it'll be for two or three years, something. So, yeah, it's interesting. But there are other bills and Eunice is tracking. She does legislative for community development. And so she's, it's almost a full-time job as well, tracking the bills and commenting on them and coordinating testimony and that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
At the end of session, for those that go all the way through and get signature.
Yes, exactly. So we'll have a list of what those are at the end. That's one of the things she has to do. And then we have to go through and determine what code amendments we need. So we're happy to share that. The planning commission, we have that list. So you know what kind of amendments to be looking for.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Schweickart, you're good? Okay. Other questions? Lisa, did you finish your report?
I did. Thank you.
And we don't, I don't see any other hands raised for questions. So we'll move on to comments for the good of the order. Any comments for the good of the order? I appreciate everybody's attention to that hearing today. That was a tough one. I mean, it was a very complicated and it, you know, and I think all of us want to make, want to do the right thing and want to, to help development to the best that we can when it makes sense and when it's following what there should be following. So it's, it's just, it was a hard, a hard one for me to noodle through. And I ended up reading that material two or three times just to get through it. But I do appreciate everybody's participation on that discussion. Any other comments for the good of the order? And thank you, Shelby, again. Oh my gosh, it's so much easier when it's live. Whoever takes the president's role after me, it's just, it's gonna be much easier for you.
No one. You do so good. Just stay forever.
Very humble, that's for sure. Well, if I don't see any other hands raised and I don't, we are adjourned and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Happy Mother's Day to all of you.
You too, Josh.